Good? We have four. We have our form here. I know Mr. Roswell is introducing today. Well, we do expect that this report will... We're gonna start, alright, because we got a lot... So I'm gonna take the easy one first. I'm gonna call the committee on administrative efficiency to order first. And the first item up is the creation of the city council youth advisory board. And as I had spoke to some folks here, last year, the Schenectady Foundation held a youth summit in Proctor's Theater. And we had close to 200 youth there that attended. Mostly Schenectady high school students. And one of the things that came out of that summit was the request to have youth advisory board here in the city of Schenectady. So I thought it'd be a wonderful opportunity for us to do that. Albany has one. Some of our other neighbors have youth advisory boards as well. I just put together a little thing here with the whereas's and some, you know, advisory boards, powers, and compositions and stuff. The only thing I do wanna change is under section B versus "Compositioning Qualifications and Ages", should it be between the ages of 13... Alright, and this came out of the... One of the principals at Schenectady High School, who thought that that 20 was too old, that 19 would work out well. And of course, it works out perfectly. We're in section C. It says, "Youth members who reach the age of 20 while in office shall be deemed to have resigned positions on a day of their birthday." But again, as I put in here, it's gonna advise the city council members related to our youth. Youth advisory board, they're gonna be able to plan and organize youth summits, neighborhood meetings throughout the city, develop and implement the action of policies, programs, and services that will empower, support, and inform the youth of our city, and of course advise the city councils on issues related to youth, build partnerships with individuals, groups, and organizations that impact the youth families. And again, I just came up with the number 17. We can discuss that or do whatever we need to do with it. But we thought, again, working with the high schools as well, that we should have some adult members as well to be involved with it as an addition to city council members. Where the council president is, we'll appoint those two members. Alright, any feedback or any questions on this? This is very preliminary. I just wanna...
How long in turn are you looking for?
I'm sorry?
How long in turn are you looking for?
It is in there, terms of office, in section C. They shall serve no more than two-year terms. So that will give them four years. So they can use an eighth grade or a freshman as well who can be involved, and we thought that would be good. Because again, once the individual graduates, whatever, they'll bond. But again, that's... The mayor, we're hoping that the mayor can also point something from his office to attend as well. We've had meetings at the high school, since that is really the easiest location for all youth to meet. And then of course, meeting with the mayor. Just like, you know, we used to do the job shadow. Do we still do that or not? Do you remember we do that? You know, incorporate into the job shadow program, you know, work with our fellow legislators, through the mayor's office. Again, getting our youth involved and helping them make decisions for our youth here in the city of Schenectady. Any questions on that? I spoke to Chuck Sandeep. Remember, do we need a call for a public hearing on this? I believe that's what we have to do. So is everybody okay with this? I mean, just to get it started, just to get it off the ground, I think would be good. Most for a public hearing. Karen ZW, second by John Paul May, Albert CI. Alright, thank you. And so move on to the second piece here, discussion with the city court. Court analysis and Mr. Mayor Bartholomew.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure what direction the public comments. If there isn't support within the council, we'll just continue on administratively. We provided some extensive documentation that's gone over a period of time. Subsequent discussions with you talked about do requests, maybe have the controller's office come in and provide an independent review of the cost analysis and workload within the court and related functions to get a position both the city and the court going forward and what could be the most efficient organizational structure, both in terms of staffing and visible plans.
And if I may, I mean, I didn't get a chance to go through any of this stuff. You just gotta handle this as I walked in, obviously. But we're saying that OCA has already rejected our plans that we gave them a month before here, or how did that...
These were early back in 2015, and they stopped communicating with us. But yes, they did found deficiencies that they didn't like within the proposals. Can talk about utilizing existing facilities and a couple of a second shift. That was actually not allowed in the law. Worked with Assemblymember Phil Stack. State Legislature passed a modification law that's included in the package. That passed both houses of legislature, signed by the governor, allowing equivalent of a night court. The... They did their internal review and said that that was not a configuration that they felt they could do. And they position OCA as a separate independent body and not subject to criteria of the legislation. So it's only a recommendation was made, even though I believe a true cost analysis would come out to show that that is an optimal configuration for the structure within the court. It'll be to utilize the facility, the two within the police station, use it effectively, have a night court.
And for those who are watching, OCA is actually near state's Office of Court Administration, for those who might know of OCA, just for informational purposes. And again, this piece of your resolution, Mr. Mayor, we're not talking about eliminating the judgeship. You're just looking for a cost analysis from the control.
Well, my personal position is that the judgeship should...
Eliminate, we understand that. But this piece here...
Where I was asking the council to support that, it clearly isn't supported from the public comments. I think based more on superficial analysis. Maybe just haven't had the time to do the in-depth review. But absent that, would ask an independent body... The Controller's Office has done some extensive work in terms of consolidation of village courts within towns and other court facilities. And I think it would be good for not only this community, but other communities brought him in and did a analysis of the total cost. Again, the night court within city of Schenectady, the police department, I'll just give an example, will write a substantial number of traffic tickets on the 3 to 11 shift. Again, they're not the worst things in life. People shouldn't do it. But for an individual to challenge that ticket that's written from 3 to 11, they got to take a day off from work and go to court during the day in terms of city staffing. We have to pay officers who are scheduled to work the 3 to 11 shift, pay them overtime to go to the court during the day, where it'd be much more convenient for both the officers and those individuals using the court to do it at night. And there's also small things, matters that would be more convenient to be held in evening hours. There's those things that would be deemed more high risk, where you have individuals who've committed violent crimes, other things that in a risk assessment would still be handled during the day when there's appropriate staff and facilities in place to deal with, well, class, like this is a different client to help.
So another, just another follow-up. Are we able to foil or get any information from OCA regarding the number of cases or appearances that our city court judges have had in 2018 or before that? So I really, and I'll do that or whatever I have to do, I'd really see if we can get that information. Again, my biggest concern is of course domestic violence. You know, that's our second biggest call here in the city of Schenectady. Orors of protection, I think are very important. You know, mainly for those victims. And I'm just truly, and I'm continuing on record, I'd be adamantly opposed to eliminating any judgeship. But again, we'll look for the controller to just do a study to take a look.
Well, we do about 1,500 arrests a year of domestic violence.
And again, that's just so very important. I just don't wanna see anything enter that process, slowing it down or having anything really not allowing victims to appear in front of the judge in a timely manner.
But that's not a scenario that would happen. If you look at the caseload before this judgeship was created, there's not much of a deviance in terms of the caseload it's today, but...
Well, I agree. Really, the thing is vote enforcement tickets. And I think we've done a good job at it. And you know, if somebody's guilty of violation, getting a ticket or vote enforcement, you know, if you gotta take a day off from work, you do that. Because we've been doing a good job of cracking down on that. And I think, again, that's one of the reasons why our crime rate's fallen down is because of the course system that we have in place here. And again, certainly, I will support this piece as a resolution here. Of course, I came from the manager's office, and that's all that we're looking for with this hat. And again, I will ask OCA or whatever to see if we can get a breakdown of what cases were and how many voted down.
I would probably come out in the cost study, wouldn't it?
Well, we'd ask that those cases, the caseload be reviewed. Your staffing levels based on the caseload.
Right. As the mayor pointed out in private conversations as well, I mean, there's been many times that our city court areas have gone to county court. So we've been working with, shorthand if you will, on many, many occasions here. And again, to be shorthand again, I think would really hinder us to have two judges. But I hope they won't take it, buddy.
I might take issue with some of your word choice. That you give a county court designation because the workload is greater in county court there, so they're assigned there. It's not because we have greater workload here. It really justifies, for the gender analysis, they move people to county court. That's probably where the judgeship should have been created originally.
Well, it is great, though.
No, it isn't.
I thought we had the actual word on Kevin Berthold. Yeah, it's a man. Well, that's a man. Yes, that was a man. Correct. That's correct. Yes, 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 yes. Alright, any other questions on this?
This question, uh, was made. With this resolution here and waiting on the cost study, would this affect what's filling the fourth judgeship? Or we just will proceed and fill this? And if the cost study doesn't come back in time...
Well, we don't, right now, have no say in it. You know, my request to move the state legislature to abolish it in the budget, then it would not be filled in this election cycle.
Just for a minute.
So I don't think I heard the answer to the question.
Yeah.
So if you're asking for this, does that mean everything is on hold? You don't fill it because you're waiting for this in anticipation of asking for it to be abolished? Or do we still move forward with filling the decision, you know? Because we know the judge...
Well, we don't have any direct control in filling it. The way it's set up now is an elected position that would go through the normal process of city council members, mayors who might be running this year, might not. And the judge would be on that timeline also. What would ask in this, or I believe that review will show that the position, the staffing is probably at a higher level, would also ask the total analysis in terms of using the existing facilities so that in fact, we could use the police court changes within the police station to run a night court as opposed to having to build in the higher other court.
You said that before they denied our request. Was it, was the primary request for a night court? The last time was that they asked? So that was, that was the night court? And also, do you know how long this will take, all part?
Yes, no idea.
And the reason I ask that is given the fact that potentially everything will move up this year in terms of people voting for office in elections, et cetera. So I guess, again, I'm asking, will that impact that in any way of what the planned process is? I know it's not our process to do it.
This would not impact the process by which the position would be filled via election.
Mr. Mayor?
Other than night court, have you put any other offers on the table as far as in the bush here?
Yeah, there's scenarios in...
I mean, I just saw this tonight. I have a chance to go through it.
And the modifications within this building can just look at.
And we've had negotiations with that.
With other, and also other facilities.
And what's the certainty that the county court's office is gonna be thoughtful of this? So we're passing the resolution, asking for something? We don't even know what's gonna happen?
I think we need to figure, I'm sorry. I think it's worth the ask to give the, you know, the controller an idea of what it's gonna cost and maybe, you know, have the Office of Court Administration take a serious look at this and maybe rethink their position from, you know, 2015.
Yeah. I think it's worth the ask as well. I'm not in support, unless that could be proven otherwise, of getting rid of that fourth judge. But there are things that I believe are valid alternatives, and the OCA is just rejecting them. And, you know, it's something that could benefit us as a city. So I think it's worth the ask.
So what about showing us all around? And you always go into legislature, looking for 12.5 million. Can we go through the legislature and ask for 2 million for the courthouse? Or 2.2 or whatever this number is ever going to be? And pushing that response. Now, true, man, well, actually, yeah. Well, I guess always hopefully too. I mean, that'll be the other, my other attack, right?
I just wanted to understand, we could do it for our little side of the house. Is that cool? Could we be the engineering part? Wanna scroll through it? If you give us a little more lead time, that'd be wonderful.
So that one, is that something that we need to do to read through this? I can choose a couple of weeks, just read through it and provide more questions? Or email to myself or directly to the mayor?
2015, I know the council's done very extensive reviews every year in terms of the budget. And we look at everything. And we've done all these cost analysis for policing, for fire departments. These things have been available to the council. I assume they've been cognizant of that, the review that's going forward. Again, we've now gone, going on last five years. And these are the configurations. And I don't wanna spend a minute truly embarks on what I don't fully use as necessary.
Well, because that's gonna be your opinion. I don't know what I need to ask. Because again, I haven't reviewed anything that you've given us today. Is that, Al, is that alright, folks? I mean, I don't know, let's take it...
I think it's worth the ask personally. I really do.
Without even reviewing the...
Well, this is from 2015. And if they rejected this, thought that was before before, and things have changed, maybe this will help to, you know, open their eyes to alternative measures.
So how do we know this is a true number? Also, is that in this package that you gave us here?
Those plans are here.
So is it in our package or somewhere else?
No, those are, these plans are separate. They're available for the council to review.
Mr. Ward?
Well, I guess that this turned 2015 and up. My personal opinion, I would like to be able to review that before I even ask, even though I know that this sort of stage, what they ask at building, the opportunity to do that. And I understand what you're saying, Mayor, that in reviewing the budget over the last few years, but I don't think that we were really concentrating on this particular issue as much as we are right now. So I would say I would like to be able to do that. And I guess we have more questions than we were to raise up.
In this room, were you still gonna try to get our local senate? Just, just come on in, I'm sorry. Were you still trying to get our senate and our senators here for the February event, chance?
February 19th.
So that might be a nice opportunity as well to see whether, you know, push the controls, choose as well.
That's the best thing, if we send this out, if they happen to say yes, they'll do it. We'll have our representatives here. We can certainly make the ask for support. We're going to anyway, assuming. And, you know, maybe that we could get that number down to something more reasonable. And we could get some assistance from the state.
Because that'd be my suggestion, try to get someone from the state. And they're looking for us to build this. How many other communities had to build courthouses? Do we have any idea? What is Canada? How many other, three or four? Wasn't there four of us? The guys, Buffalo, us, those areas, those over...
15 or 17 communities across the state, the regional legislature.
Is that what it was?
I can, I don't have that. I'll try to, I'll give it to you before you leave tonight.
Yeah, that'd be interesting to see what they did, what those communities did, how they paid for their... I mean, my goodness, guess what? The state gave them funding, and you know, and we come, you know, full barrels and ask for it as well. Let's take a look at those other communities did. How they incorporated their additional judgeships, where they put them, he or she, and see how they did it. But again, you know, I will support this down the road. I think, I think the consensus is, at least from what we're aware of here, just to give us some time to read through all this stuff here that you gave us and actually review that.
Even what the mayor should do.
I appreciate the pictures very much, and I appreciate the captions. So that's been for me. Is that okay? Are you two guys alright with it? John, Karen, just gonna hold this for two weeks and...
I think, given that we're hoping to have our state representatives here in the 19th, I would like to see about moving forward and seeing if we can get a cost study. So when they're here, we can directly hit them with orders. But, you know...
We'll likely go to that, I think.
By the 19th?
Alright.
You did it by 2020, go on, I'm thinking. I'm thinking April 2020, my friend, when they're gonna come knocking on doors. That world.
No, realistically, you shouldn't take that long.
Alright, so are we good with that? So we're gonna hold it for two weeks? See if we can read through all this information here, see what those other communities did. Trying to foil the number of cases that have appeared at the city court in 2018. See if we can break down that as well. And get that before we, before next one on the court, maybe, or eight, man? Something like that. Alright, and then again, sorry, we will support that. I do appreciate the cost, and I will push that. I think we just need to really get a little fairness to everybody here. Just do the information that we got. Alright, so are we good with that? Alright, so left the door before our meeting. Call for motion of adjournment. This is Karen, John Paul May, Albert CI. We're gonna close, and Karen, if we could move on to city development planning, if you don't mind?
Sure. So the first item on the agenda is discussion for proposed CDTA taxi ordinance. Are we good to go with that?
Yes, and so, right, come, come.
Hi, I'm...
It took her a little longer. She, her bus was a little bit slow today with the traffic and everything, so...
It's my name is Karen, and I'm from the Capitol region. There are about...
Well, you haven't been on the microphone today, have you?
That's fair, I haven't been on one.
Wow. And Lauren May, she's the mobility manager for CDTA. And she's been working, yeah, that's fine. Well, actually, your... Hey, hon? Alright. And she's been working on the ordinance, taxi, folks, so... Oh, good, and you? Alright.
Sure, so hello, everyone again. Again, my name is Lauren. I'm mobility manager for CDTA. So I can tell you a couple times about our proposed taxi ordinance. We're back today with feedback from the cap companies, including some of the folks in the room. Good to see you guys. And to kind of move forward with this as a regional ordinance. Backgrounds began back in 2016. The CDTA had a legislative motion from the state to create a regional taxi program. We insisted to fill this down to do what municipalities and what the cap companies that actually wanted, what will actually work. The ordinance that we are proposing currently has been passed by the cities of Syracuse Springs and Albany. And Troy has passed a version, although it's not this one version, with the amendment in it that now kind of we've found it better than virtually, no, there, there, sorry, excuse me. I bring that word over there. So what this does is it is modeled off of the Schenectady ordinance. It is then moved to be a little clearer, a bit more streamlined. It still maintains all authority with Schenectady City Hall. CDTA is not taking over the decision-making authority. So that is still city by city. And other than that, nothing else there, any other things to add?
Alright, so let's, oh, sorry, it sounded pretty, my apologies. Go right ahead, Miss Karen.
Did you have any questions, Mr. Corb?
No, 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 no.
So, um, so how is this gonna impact our local companies? I mean, is this gonna be beneficial to our companies here?
I think that the, for Schenectady, there are any changes in the other municipalities. The fare structure is based off of the meter rate that the Schenectady is using, compiled with the way the airport operates as well. So it is maintaining a similar fare structure as well as the north side is what's going to be happening.
So hasn't changed since 2006. Okay, so if we wanted to increase these rates, this would not be the time to do it, or would this be the time to do this?
That goes to the municipalities and the council. We currently, the legislation we are working underneath allows each municipality to set its own fare structure. We do want everyone to have the same plan. So if, as this is an ongoing discussion, you know, if this is something they should have considered raising, that is a discussion that we all have. We will just have to go back to everyone else and say that they increased it now.
So the other municipalities have the same rates we have?
They, yes, they recently passed the ordinance to have the same rate we have.
Mr. Mayor? Again, this evolved from, looking at taxi service within the Capitol District. And there was a wide variant in terms of the quality and the rate structures. And people solely within the city of Schenectady or Albany, you know, knew the rules there, whatever. But as we are evolving to more of a regional destination, and people coming in and out of the Capitol District for GE, Global Foundries, NanoTech, other companies here, it really was their first impression of the Capitol region. And it was creating a negative perception. And so, within the patchwork of the regulatory environment, CDTA seemed to be the best organization to step forward to provide a regional approach to standardizing the rate structure and at the same time looking to improve the overall quality of service. And in the review, Schenectady actually had the best ordinance, was kind of the leader in terms of enforcement. The working environment is in place and devolved so that it was, you know, passed by the state legislature, shifting the authority. Schenectady, again, has not moved quite as fast as I would like. Your council, I just looked at this a couple times, continues to look at it, looking at it again tonight, is how do we now buy into that regional approach to not only service the needs of residents and businesses within this community, but create the regional impact and the seamlessness that adds... this community, but create the regional impact and the seamlessness that adds value to everybody?
Thank you, so every single cab in the Capitol region is going to follow the exact same structure?
That is the law.
Okay.
So then, how did that differ, we only want to have the ears?
With passing this, other municipalities have behind it, will mention year requirements as well, territories, certain will mention there would be requirements, equipment, for example.
Oh, so, so that it enough?
So in the, in the ordinance, it is language that requires taxi meters, so that will, or a local meter indicator, there are a lot of other things out there that aren't the same state, it's all the states that are also, you know, municipalities, municipalities, discussion-wise, it's a bit too.
So we're not doing zoning anymore?
Yeah.
Because again, that's what I had looking for, and my father should ask you that, I remember you a couple weeks ago, because that was one of the agents, and how we were not comparing apples to apples or so. Oh, that's very interesting, and we did change the year of the vehicles from seven to ten years, so I think this really had that concern, a lot of the cap, if somebody had seen that change there as well. The other change that, that, one we were talking about is, here you've got now for each additional tenth of a mile?
Yeah.
Where the cap companies are now doing every eighth of a mile? Is there any reason, I mean, it's the same amount, it's two dollars, it's two dollars, but apparently the meter cameras, it's easier for them to charge with the eighth rather than breaking down to ten, is that something that we could just go with that eight, or is there a reason we get a ten?
It was for easier calculation for people, for passengers, we heard that they're generally confusing, having it by a hundred miles a year, we can discuss it further if we really need to.
Because again, it works out the same, it's the same two dollars. And then the other piece is the additional surcharge. We are currently allowing to charge a additional surcharge all day in certain cities, where the ordinance is only saying legal holidays and after 6:00 p.m.?
Sure, so according to the online, the Ecode version, that is a 6:00 p.m., so I'm not sure if the rate online is on the actual card system.
Well, good on, on their cars, this is his sticker that they're charging now, and so it's currently all day, so they're charging additional surcharge of a dollar. And then somebody looks like to, you know, put it down here.
Okay, remain in a discrepancy. We're, I have no reason specifically for that, other than that is what we agreed upon, and that is not a new draft for us, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, it's okay, and then the last piece is with the minimum wage only up continuously, not only federal, but those New York state governors continue to drive it at fifty dollars. And again, with our local cab companies that are here, we're talking about looking at rate increase, so that would be something that we would have to do, do we talk about that now at this meeting, or do we pass this ordinance and then come back?
As I previously answered that question, the A1 legislation that we operate underneath allows each municipality to set a fare structure, said it's within your right to do that, I do encourage you to pass this, and then look at that, obviously this is a larger discussion, regulation is much faster than anything that we're able to pass, we want to make sure the work is possible to all our cab companies, we also want to make sure the work is steward to our customers as well, you know, from what we hear, from the payback we get, is that people don't even necessarily mind what the rate is as long as they know what it is, and there's been a lot of confusion in the region. Yeah, to use portionate because they're a meter saver all the time, so if it's the kind of thing that the customer base can support, and it's something that people are calling for, then it is 100% within the city council's right to do what you need to do for your community.
And again, as I mentioned before, you know, our ridership here in the city is going to be as much different than the ridership in the city of Albany or Cali or Sertu, and that's why I think we're very, we're very aware of the four dollars fee, and raising it up to whatever we have to, but again, at the same time, we have to understand these small companies that drive to maintain business, sustain business as well, so that is the only questions I have on this, I'm sorry to take a long nap, so Mr. Aaron, that's your committee?
Yeah, the rate schedule apparently is the one that comes from our cabs, has a waiting time, about fifteen minutes or more, I can see that in years as something that would be done away with?
Yes.
Ms. Ray.
Yes, so, anybody that signs on this legislation, they're going to be all meter, did I understand that correctly? Okay, that was, that was a big problem before.
Anything else?
And that's, yes, I do, and again, now the enforcement of the, of the medallions, that's going to be up to the city, so that has to go to the CDTA, the medallions?
That's our larger discussion that we need to have with the people who do this day-to-day, currently all that is done by the city, I believe it's all through Connectedity TD. It is something that CDTA will have to negotiate whether it makes sense for us to be able to date any of that on or not, certain cities that are interested in us taking it on, whether that makes sense for us to, or the other cities don't make much sense, that would be a discussion we have, or actually, once this was asked.
Okay, and how about the partner city code, our city code that says that people must maintain an office in the city of Connectedity, open 24 hours a day, is that going to go by wayside with this?
That is not included in the proposed ordinance.
I'm sorry?
That is not included in the proposed ordinance.
So do we have to change our city code, and then we go to, it's already in our city code?
Yes. Next, our, our own.
The, it's something, you know, the old days where dispatching has changed, and the other dynamic at play, when this concept was first proposed, starting, Lyft and Uber were really not players, now it's another component of the taxi business, and, you know, the whole concept of the dispatch centers has changed, so you have to have some point of reference, some formal office, you know, yes, we like it in Connectedity, does it have to be in the Capitol District, something really for the council to discuss, and also to talk with the cab companies, and what's that evolving business model, where do you need a formal dispatch center, or are things handled via cell phone and computers and really?
I think that's what's happening now, some of the chipsy cab companies that own their own, they're losing their self.
Right.
So the guy can be sleeping in bed, so it's no different than Uber or Lyft, except they have a medallion from the city of Connectedity, and I don't know what we're taking in on medallions here with the, what do we have, sixty, sixty-some, well, seventy? The office service in the pantry?
Sorry, what's the number of medallions we have operating?
Well, I just took over the traffic business in June, so I was told it was about 160 when I first started, and we need to tell all you guys now, by January 1st, the drivers have to come in, they have to renew their medallion every year, they work, print out a picture of them, they know the system, this year we probably had maybe sixty drivers come in, so the traffic people, the civilians were like, wow, there's not a lot of drivers coming in, could be two things, it could be they're driving around, we spire the medallions, which couldn't be happening, or I called Albany, I wanted to see what Albany was doing, and the sergeant down there said taxis are going to be a thing to pass in the city of Albany, Uber and Lyft has taken over Albany, they're down to thirty drivers, so I'm seeing it happening here, there's probably sixty drivers left. We're going to be doing some sweeps soon, I'm not sure exactly when, but we're going to start doing that in April every year, and all the cabs come down to the station, and we hold the whole cap, but there's only maybe sixty left. That came in this year. Maybe they can answer that, but.
You seem to be confusing cab licenses of drivers and medallions, medallions are the cars themselves.
Oh, sorry, okay, that's an error.
Right. Sixty of them.
Wait a minute, there's no back and forth.
All right.
I think the universal regulations and rules are good, we want our companies to play on the same rules as all the other cities, so that's a good thing, I think we do need to look at the cost structure and make some adjustments there, I would be in favor of that anyway, and, but I like that we're putting our guys on the same playing field as everybody else, and I think we really have to go after the chipsy cabs and the ones who aren't authorized.
And that's why I asked the sergeant here today, I'm just saying, can you just give us a brief rundown of what we're doing, of the cabs there, that don't have the medallions or anything, I mean, any idea of, we're going to start pushing that, we had a lot going on, we talked to the competitors, we had them also, so we're going to start cracking down on the taxis soon, other things have taken precedence with the Christmas parade, the fall is very busy for us with all the therapists, the stocking, we're going to start packing with the taxis, considering now talking to Cheryl on the traffic business, she's like, I know where all these drivers are, because yous either lined up, they're calling, they want their permit, they're not coming in, so we're seeing a big change in cabs, so we're going to start cracking down very soon, between now and April, we're not going to wait till April, we want to see who's out there driving out. And I think that's, to Mr. Ray's point right earlier, I mean, we have all these cab companies that are just not following the rules, regulations, and we have these generally who are really trying to buy by, and we have more there from CDTA trying to get us all together, and yet we have people that are not following the laws and regulations, I think that's important as well. So what, Ms. Bailey's looking for us to do today is just to move this ordinance as is, we can talk about the rate schedules and change that in upcoming session, but I guess just for the purpose of getting this ordinance passed with, you know, a couple of changes that they made, that we asked for, if we can just make a motion to move that, and then in two weeks or wherever, we can put on the taxi cab schedules and the rate, the rate schedule, but again, Ms. Bailey's not concerned with that at this point, just to move the ordinance, so we can get the other towns with this, counties on board with this, to get the meters in place, so we're all going to be on a fair, on a fair local playing field, rather than zoning fares.
I understand what you're saying, Council President, but these guys, they're behind, they've been paying the higher minimum wage since January 1st, so we're already twenty-one days into that, so.
Two weeks.
Yeah, but if they have a lot of drivers, that can come to a lot of money a week, so they're behind the eight ball, you know, we're not, we don't want companies going out of business either in the city, that doesn't help.
Don't blame you, Mr. President.
So, I mean, why can't we incorporate that pool change, or the rate change at the same time?
What do you, yeah, I'm sorry, Karen, my, um.
First, the council can move to places, there's a two-step process, one is to adopt the standardized ordinance, ordinance for the regional, and then the second one, you have to call for a public hearing, do the public hearing, and then do the rate change, so really two separate pieces of legislation, they're not one that would be incorporated following one.
So, again, so I would ask a motion to move the ordinance as is, and then we could, after we move this, then we can discuss if you want today, with Sharon today, to talk about the rate decrease today, or table that, but these will be ordered, this council. Well, I'd say a public hearing first as well. The ticket, okay, so we.
So we have to do a public hearing?
For the rate.
For the rate for this?
Unless a public hearing has already taken place, obviously on the same or substantially similar legislation, which I don't recall happening, and I don't know if you recall it, if it works off, if it's in any record.
I believe there was a public hearing in 2018, yes, on this, but.
2018?
2018?
Before that.
We changed the rates a couple of years ago.
Right, I'm thinking about the specific ordinance that I was proposing, I was here in 2018, to speak on that, unless my, I was telling you, I've been doing this project for about three and a half years, I have definitely been here.
So, do we have any record of a public hearing, or do we have a record of it?
Well, we tried, I thought the council had done a public hearing, but it may not have.
We have the order.
But again, but if they're two separate things, it's a public hearing, not the.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, and then, before with the rate one, there was a public hearing, it's one of those, several.
Well, that's fair, a public hearing.
Yeah, and I think that's why we came back and made the changes, because it was wrong with the public hearing that we heard from taxi cab folks and the other individuals, where we heard with the recommendation for the changes where we came back, and then that's where we're making the changes, so, but we didn't move beyond that point though after that, after we got the changes, the resident kind of now, you can bring it forward after that.
Well, my personal feeling is we should have the public hearing first again, and then follow down the ordinance, to hear from the cab companies how they feel about this, they're the ones who have to live by it, that's what you're saying, I guess, that's what you have to do.
We have the public hearing.
Before we pass this order, before we adopt.
Yeah, and I think that's a motion to call for a public hearing.
All right. Not the only one, so.
I'll say to them, all in favor? All right, so we will have a public hearing, and we, in reference.
We'll call for a public hearing.
For the ordinance.
One day, two weeks later.
Okay, so, the next item on the, on the agenda is, is the discussion on the sidewalk placement program, and it turns over to Mr. Trump.
So I'm just passing around what the petition sheet, sheet would look like, I've worked on this with Mr. Palatigo, so this would be what the petition sheet would look like, also, we kind of, at this point, to move forward, just so we can have a process in place, what kind of year payback program we were talking about, I did come up with some additional cost factors, so the ten-year payback would be in there, but we also look at twelve and fifteen-year payback, a twelve-year payback, unfortunately, is not in your packet, but I'll pass this around, let you look at it. I will pass this around, is nineteen dollars and forty-six cents per month, and a fifteen-year payback would be sixteen dollars and forty-four cents per month, so make it a little, it's this piece down here, let's see if I can think of change, so depending upon the payback period, would make it more cost-effective for residents, and we're looking at, you know, when you're talking about sidewalks, ideally they're going to last forty, fifty years, so people will certainly get their money's worth, other than that, the, we're looking at seventy-five percent of property owners within the district to agree to it, but otherwise, I think that's pretty well, we talked about everything.
Questions? Do you have the updated information for, because that's not really handy, have a copy of that, or?
I'll give you a copy of that, I thought it was in the packet, but.
Oh, it's still the old one.
Also, if you'd like to follow.
It's called, it was nineteen forty, and, sorry, not fifteen years, it was sixteen forty-four. Well.
A couple more questions, so, we had talked, Chris, the sitting here talked about only a four inch thick sidewalk, so did you change your numbers, did your numbers reflect the change?
No, I'd rather.
He has six.
I understand that, I'd rather have numbers that are in our proposal anyway, that are high, beyond the conservative end, when we go out for the real pieces with information for residents, we can get those figures more exact, but for our purposes of putting together a process, I'd rather put conservative numbers that are on the high end, and that's what we did. Right, we did that with both the interest rate and the thickness.
Ms. Porter?
When people are, when you're going around and having these petitions signed, will there be information attached to something that people will receive to understand what the cost is going to be in the payback period, and the payback period, and, and everything that goes with it, because there's a lot of information in your, what we get, but will they have?
Yeah, so, working, if an area wants to go about the special assessment, they can work with the city clerk's office, they can get the frontage, they'll be able to get the exact cost based on the frontage of the sidewalk, and make those calculations. So everybody will have a pretty good estimate. Again, costs are going to change based on bids and so forth, but it'll be a ballpark, pretty solid ballpark number.
And they're going to produce a sort of sure that's handled, that they'll go out with petitions. So.
Well, he doesn't say that in his, I'm just making sure that.
Well, this is just the process or something. Specifics for us to consider and ones that, I mean, that'll be created for people to take out with them.
So going to the public hearing, so once we select whatever we're saying, five, six, seven, eight streets, wherever we're thinking of going with the money. We need a specific bid. Obviously, we need the specific numbers from the, from, I'm just picking up the company that's going to win the bid, the more we go on with the public hearing, because it's a property ownership, not that NASSA isn't being selected, but let's just say NASSA, we need 75% signatures, all right? But I won't know that dollar amount until it's actually bid out. So the public hearing will be after it's all bid out then, is one of my questions to you. So as, as Roger and I, we'll know exactly what my cost is going to be. All right? I mean, that's not going to be that good, I need to know.
This is a, this is a fairly solid number. It was.
It's not bid out yet.
I understand, but it was from a company that does this regularly, so the number's fairly close. Because you don't know how much you're going to have to bid without having to.
So what's the purpose of our public hearing then? Well, we have to have a public hearing for this. What is the purpose of that? What set of processes are we, we have to have a public hearing?
We have to actually approve the petition and the special assessment.
With the streets that are in mind, right? With the streets that were selected.
Well, we're not selected.
Whoever's.
They're turning in their petitions, so they're asking for a special assessment.
You lost me here. So those are the, we got, so we got 15, let's say we have 15 streets that turn in petitions? So this public hearing is going to, is going to be related to all 15 streets then? I thought it was only going to be to the streets that are selected to do the, to do the sidewalk program.
It originates with the residents. Those petitions are submitted to the council. Again, I think we have two streets go forward. My assumption is you're probably going to have those streets, again, have it happen, and then people will see how well that works on a more limited deployment. A pilot. It's not a pilot, it's in place. You know, people will say, yes, it's the greatest thing. No, it's not. Go through it and bid it out, get a price and put it in place and then go forward.
And then add the public hearing. What does the public hearing just part of? That's my question.
Public hearing is part of it, but it's really, when you're talking 15 streets, I could be wrong, but I don't think that's going to happen this year. Maybe the next year, year after that, you would. But, and, um, when is this actually, the public hearing has to be in the whole process?
What it says is, and this is actually something in our city charter, you're not inventing the wheel, you're going to use it in a unique way that hasn't been used before, but anytime a group of citizens creates, you might say, this is our white district, it's this street or this two streets, and we want an improvement. A repaved street, new sidewalks, new lights, whatever it is, in this case, sidewalks, then they would get a petition done, they'd go to the city clerk, and if it has not signatures, then the city council looks at it, they hold a public hearing, and you get feedback on them, and then the city council decides if you want to forward it or not. So then after that, you go out, you can bid it out and look at the numbers, and maybe you decide based on the bid that the numbers are too high and you don't want to do it. And you are not obligated to do it after the public hearing, just that's how the process works.
I am not obligated. Once I sign it, once the public hearing is okay, I'm locked in, is what I'm saying?
You are not, you are not locked in.
I'm not locked in.
So you hold a public hearing, and then if the council decides they want to move forward, it can be bid out, and then you can see what the results are.
Right.
And if you don't like the numbers, you are not obligated to do it. You see the council. City council. If the council votes to move forward with it.
Then we lock them.
Then you lock them and do the special assessment for the improvement that they're getting.
Property ownership.
S K decision.
Going to make a key difference, too.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
Ms. Porter? So how much sidewalk can we do for maybe now?
I think the estimate was anywhere between five and eight blocks, depending upon the size. Might even get more, given what Mr. Wall said about reducing the thickness of the, of the sidewalk from six to four inches.
Now, this is going to include the. This is going to include the path equating the sidewalk and the street, you know, the path that goes, that has to be concrete. Is that including that in this, or just sidewalks?
For the driveway or?
Yeah, the path of the driveway close to the.
My understanding is yes would include that.
Because that's where you go, that has to be six inches. So sidewalks can be, according to Mr. Wall, what he likes to say, right now, they're going to six inches. He'd like to have a change to four inches on the sidewalk, six inches.
And so when they design it, spec it out, anything that's going to have load on it, we're fucking driveway, we don't do six inch.
Are people that are using long street, driveway, send a lot?
Well, we don't, we're not.
That's two inches, that's.
Eliminate some of that, but against areas where it's only going to be from walking, believes that the four inch is sufficient.
Any other questions?
So what's our next step? Or how do we prepare our side movements?
Just like to get a number on what people would like to do as the payback period, 10, 12, 15. And again, I'll give pop runs, you'll talk somewhere, and yeah, everybody will get a copy of this. For a 10-year payback, it's $22.50 per month. For a 12-year, it's $19.46 per month. And for 15, it's $16.44 per month.
Per thousand dollars, right?
No, that's assuming for a 50-foot frontage, a four percent, a four percent interest rate, and a six-inch sidewalk and $80 per square yard. So all very conservative numbers on the high end would likely come in lower than that.
So again, roll over if I sell my property, people with 10 years or it stays with the property, right? Or like somebody passes away in the house, it stays.
Stays to the next.
Property. Somebody that they not agreed to this, wanting to pay for.
And that's Mr. Reeves' question, that's, what about credit checks? Anything like that, is maybe we, we have to be current on taxes as well? But no, you can't, because that's part of the.
It's part of it, yeah.
No, we're not going to run credit checks on kosher every, bad too. A property, it goes on your tax, so it's going to be.
Gotcha.
How you handle just property taxes payment or non-payment.
Well, we are loaning out taxpayer money, which becomes beneficial finance for this, basically, right? I mean, you can't go to a loan company and get a loan for the sidewalk. My personal feeling is, I think we should put this together for people, see how many people want to sign on, put it together, unify it with the contractor, and then tell the people, okay, we can get you these sidewalks. Let them get their own homes and pay for it instead of loaning taxpayer money. I can see this as being a logistic nightmare when all said and done, down the road, that's what I see.
Who pays? Special assessments on pretty much everything in the city.
Yeah, but would we do forecasts on the sidewalk? Or would we forecast on the house if they don't pay for that?
It's part of the house.
So they own their house, why? I think it's for the sidewalk.
It's, this is nothing new.
Most of the sidewalks in the city were built in a special assessment. Most of the sewers were put in a special.
It's even street lights and street walls by special assessment.
And again, there's a savings here too, John. What do we see, a savings of almost 30% or 40% or a regular?
Probably a payback period, but it's roughly 30, 40% savings.
34%.
You're not dealing with a contractor. That's a big thing. The other piece is you're getting the pay off slowly over time instead of the, the big expense all at once, which many people in the city just can't afford.
And once the sidewalks are done and the neighborhood, there's the entire neighborhood, it'll increase the property values. So I know that the streets are asking for this, I'm looking for that. So, you know, I, I think this is a good thing.
Yeah, and, yeah, and the city of Rochester has this as well, they've done, they've done some research as well, John, and they've done neighborhoods at times, they went to neighborhoods. But again, it's been very, very successful over there. It's been, you know, resounding. As we've all talked about, one of our biggest things have been sidewalks, you said sidewalks. But the sidewalks have been atrocious here, and I just think this gives the property owner a little help, a little advantage. The only one that will certify the contractors, somebody that we're going to recommend.
Well, the city.
The city. Right, so it's going to be somebody that we know, and again, the city's going to be up with this all, I just think it's a great program. And again, it's capital money that we're using, so what is, the interest that the homeowner is paying is going to cover the interest on the loan for the capital loan that we're taking out.
Yes.
For million dollars. So it's really truly no cost to the city, because that's where the interest rate is going to offset that cost of the loan that we're taking out.
I just want to clarify, you said that it's somebody that the city knows, somebody the city's going to choose, but that's not, that's.
Once bid out.
Yeah, well, that's different.
That's a, that's a, the city, we know, we're not, they'll be responsible.
Exactly. The city necessarily knows that.
No, no, no.
Maybe not, but I just, yeah, exactly. Because if someone's like, they chose the contractor, he said it because it's somebody we own.
No, I'll just get it out.
I do have another question. You mentioned the city of Rochester. Did the city pay, help pay it all? Was this with a special assessment?
Did it, did it special assessment? Yeah. And they had 75% of the property ownership, so that was pretty arguable, the same.
Ms. Porter?
And in terms of the 200-inch miles of sidewalk, that's, that's considering the entire city being paid, so that number doesn't include the streets that have already been done and are really, really being changed. So that number can be a little bit lower, yes?
Yeah.
Correct.
Anything else?
So we're moving forward, right? Is that?
That's the goal, but we just need to know how long. I mean, I think we need to take a pulse of, you know, whether it be 10 years, 12 years, or 15 years.
All right. So let's hear from the public hearing.
Okay.
And then, that is, when we come back, and then, again, the petition process, well, how are we doing that, Jeff? They do have.
Yeah, I have a question in terms of we're moving with a public hearing, not for the petition that we have.
But just for.
No, just.
Just for.
Just the process.
The process, okay.
The petitions itself will get redone, because the ones that were turned in were never acted upon, unfortunately. And even though there is a requirement to do so, they were never acted upon. And so they're old, so we'll go back through. And given that people in the neighborhoods change, we want everybody to have updated information so no one's caught up.
Okay. So we will call for a public hearing. Good? Second.
You're coming to respond.
All right. All right. The next item is a ceremony, a resolution for the Peter family.
Yep, and Bruce Luchslander, I think we have a rough draft in there as well. The Peter family, for 100 years of service, this county police department, and I just think it's a wonderful way to honor and recognize a great family and then for what they've done here at the city's management. And we'll present that as well.
I'll second, I'll favor. So move. The rest of the items on, on here under city planning and development are the sale of property, so I entertain a motion to recess.
Move this.
I'll second, I'll favor.
Hi. Call or the finance committee, the only item on the agenda is the consecration temple of Kati, property tax exemption with Mr. Colton.
If you had, I hope you had my parents take a look at the rough edition here. So the consecration temple church, God at Christ Inc., they go back, they owned Hurricane Wells Street in 2008, this will desert, using the 2007 assessment rule, issue bill to church for the 2008, 2009 school taxes. According to that assessment rule, they were not taxed at that. However, according to the 08 assessment rule, which finalized in July 2008, they were taxed at that. And the school taxes became delinquent on August 1st, 2008. I know we had this issue, I think, previously with other, I think, religious institutions. There's, so projects come to us seeking relief from the school taxes that became late and associated interest penalties. There was a previous bill that became law back in 2014, requires some information on that particular piece of legislation. The idea here is if the, essentially, if you become taxed at, or the taxes become delinquent, pending city council approval, the, you could be, I guess, the F P could be deemed to have been taxed at, and retroactively applied to the previous years for the amounts that were due as well as the interest penalties. So here, we're seeking the resolution authorizing to continue with the taxes on status of consecration temple church without a pricing at 13, 12 states, which is retroactively applying and to the previous years as authorized by law.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, so, um, what they have to do right now, the principal is $18,846 with interest, it's $29,133.91. Obviously, most of this is now interest, so about two-thirds of this is interest, that's what you're due to the city.
Any other questions?
I'll move this.
I'll second. So I'm going to reopen up city planning and development.
We should go into the second session.
Second, I'll favor. Second session.